My name's Tim Werner. I'm largely a stay-at-home dad or an early retiree, chemical engineer with an environmental background. I have a PhD from the University of Michigan in chemical engineering. I've served on the Planning Commission for two years, Board of Public Works for one year, Light and Power for two years, and now the City Commission for four years, various subcommittees. And I love Traverse City, as I think just about everybody in Traverse City does. And to me, it's an opportunity to give back. I do my homework, critical thinker, an engineer though, so I come across as kind of, whatever, as an engineer. It's hard to hide that. But nonetheless, I feel like I can bring a different aspect, a different approach sometimes to the conversation, try to maybe keep things a little bit grounded at times as far as what are we really trying to accomplish? You know, what are the goals? How do we get there? Are there different ways to do it? And not just say, "Let's do it this way, or let's do it that way," but really understand what's going on and what we're trying to achieve. I'd love to have opportunity for four more years on the City Commission to complete some of the projects that are not quite complete yet, whether it's our sidewalk infrastructure for connectivity. And then also, as I described in one of my other answers, to try to bring a better understanding of the complexity of some of the costs, the carrying costs that we have. We support infrastructure, but with our investments come long-term carrying costs in the operation and maintenance. So if you think of the street right-of-way, and we'll be discussing this in regards to 8th Street, is in the entirety of the right-of-way, we have both the driving surface as well as all the infrastructure underground. We have sidewalks, we have street trees. There's a lot there, a lot going on, and they all interact with one another. And I think I have a good handle on how to keep those connected and understood.
My name's Gary Howe. I'm currently a City Commissioner, where I serve as Mayor pro tem. I was elected in 2013. I moved to Traverse City when I was two years old, and kind of great fortune of good parenting decisions to move up from Owasso, Michigan, up to Traverse City when I was that young. I've lived abroad, I've lived in many different cities, but I've lived abroad, Australia, China. Wherever I lived, I always felt like Traverse City was my home. So I'm really fortunate to have that strong sense of place. I think a lot of people that live here share. It's unique, having traveled and having a lot of classmates in university who, you know, traveled the world as well, and just they don't have a sense of place. So, you know, Traverse City was always a draw for me to come back after university and a little bit of working abroad. Since I've been back, you know, bought a house in Traverse City, I've been working as a photographer, writer, and I also do some consultant work with nonprofits from time to time. So I have the time and the privilege, I think, to represent my city. Prior to the City Commission, I was on Parks and Recreation, where I chaired Parks and Recreation. I was also on the Planning Commission. So I've been, you know, about five, six years I've been engaged pretty heavily in city affairs. My philosophy of decision-making is really based on what's the most practical decision we can make. I'm progressive in terms of, "Let's move forward and build an inclusive city." And ultimately, my decisions are aimed at, you know, what's going to create a place, a city, where we have happy people, whether we live here or are visitors. So, you know, that's what's really motivated me to run.
My name's Brian McGilvery. I'm running for City Commission. People often ask me, "Why am I running?" That's a tough question to answer in just two minutes, so I kind of gloss over it. My entire life has really been, I will thank Pat Feeney. Pat Feeney was a childhood friend, and back in elementary school, he always wanted to be in politics. He always, he never, actually, I don't think he ever did get involved in politics, but he got me thinking about it. And my entire family has always been involved in the communities that they lived in. I believe all politics are local. It's where you have the most impact. That was taught to me by my high school government teacher. I've got 28 years of experience dealing with governments at all levels. I worked 17 years as a reporter. As a reporter, I covered townships, city, county, state government, and a little bit of federal government. I also worked five years as congressional aide here in Traverse City for Congressman Bart Stupak. So I understand how the federal government works. I understand the programs and the assistance that they have, and I understand how the state government works. Part of my job has always been looking out for readers. And readers are no different than the residents, and I think that's something that'll be very helpful to me. As I may have said, I've lived in the city for 17 years. I've been married for 32. I have three grown children. And I'd really like to help develop the city so if they decide they want to live here for the rest of their lives, that they can get good-paying jobs, live in a nice home, and be successful living where they grew up. That's why I'm running.
Hi, I'm Michelle Howard. I am a current City Commissioner. I was appointed in December 2016. I've lived in Traverse City for 18 years with my three children and my husband. He's a downtown business owner. And I'm a librarian at NMC, and I really enjoy my work here in Traverse City, and I enjoy being a Commissioner.
And too often, we think if we're spending money on infrastructure, it's an investment. But it's not always an investment. To me, we have to look at every opportunity to invest in infrastructure and see what's the return on that investment. And it's not just a strict accounting dollars and cents, but we have true public investment, which the ideal is then private investment follows that. On tonight's agenda, we're talking about 8th Street, and that's kind of been what's promoted it and why I've supported it for many years, is the idea that the public, we will invest in 8th Street, and then private dollars will follow. But the private dollars need to see that the public really is going to invest. That's the dollar side, but then kind of the longer-term dollar side is also the environment and social. So we can talk about social value or environmental value, so we can make investments in our stormwater system, and that's not paying a return necessarily, but we're doing better by the bay and our watershed. And we know that a lot of what makes Traverse City so popular is our bay and our watershed and protecting that. So it is truly an investment. It would take quite a bit of time to figure out, you know, a dollar figure to assign to that. And same with the social aspect. So when we invest in sidewalks and we get people connected and interacting, it's a lot easier for me to talk to you if we pass on a sidewalk. We can wave to each other, my car to your car, but we're not so likely to have a conversation. And impromptu conversations, again, hard to put a value on that, but over time, you develop relationships, there are business opportunities, there are other opportunities that come from that, just a tighter-knit community in general. So backing up to investment, so infrastructure investment. So I'm always looking for, is it an investment or are we just spending dollars? Like how, what's the return? And we can't always say, "Well, it's a 3% return," or whatever that return is, but let's at least have some discussion and understanding of what we're hoping to achieve by that investment. We have our Corridor's Master Plan. We certainly have TIF 97, Old Town TIF. So lots of documents we can point to as far as ideas or concepts, because none of those are absolute until they get approved, whether it's by the DDA or the Planning Commission, and move on to the City Commission for approval. So each project, there's opportunity for public input, discussion, and then approval to actually expend funds on it. Because things change. We might have something in a plan, and once it gets to be a few decades old, we certainly want to revisit that and see if it still makes sense. But backing up again to, I mentioned 8th Street, that's on the agenda tonight. That's a prime example of the community needing to have the discussion of what are we trying to achieve. We know we want 8th Street to be better, but let's be more specific. What's better? And it means different things to different people, and that's good, but that's why we need to have the conversation, so we can understand where others are coming from. Certainly, it's a cross-town route, so what needs to be able to move automobiles, truck traffic, buses, school buses, beta buses, needs to be able to move those. I drive 8th Street every day, multiple times typically, and I appreciate it, even if it's slow, if it can be moving. And the slowness, you know, slow is a relative term. The speed limit's 25. If, you know, we're going 26, 27, I'm comfortable with that. But part of the road diet that was implemented several years ago was to keep those speeds down, you know, there was 35, 40, things like that. But in addition to moving vehicles through there, we want it to be a place for people. There's a neighborhood adjacent to it. We want those people to be able to go to businesses and for businesses to want to open on 8th Street and redevelopment there. So there's great opportunities, but it's those discussions of what are we trying to achieve and how are the city dollars invested in 8th Street working us toward those goals? My priorities still are probably around connecting people to people. So whether that's, you know, sidewalks is high on the list. I'd like to work toward completing the sidewalk network in the city. And then getting back to the investment aspect of it, where can we get the most for our investment? And that's how I prioritize typically.
As City Commissioner, I've been a strong advocate for wise, efficient investment in streets, sidewalks, trails, parks, you name it. And there's a lot of things that fall under infrastructure, even though we just kind of tend to think about the streets. What I mean by efficient, you know, I think it's the free money, or money coming from the federal government, or the state government, or grants. We've enjoyed, we've had a lot of success getting those grants, but they're getting smaller and smaller. State sharing is getting smaller. And really, what we need to focus on is when we invest in a street, for example, what's the return on investment? We don't just invest in streets to move cars or to move people, you know, multimodal in Traverse City, so we're moving more than just cars. We do it to generate wealth. That's wealth in the private industry, but also ultimately in the public revenue. We need to increase tax revenue. And we do that through, you know, like 8th Street is a great example. It's a, it's an underperforming street in terms of tax value. Nothing against any of the business along there, but at a sense, it's because we've just, of the way it's been designed and the land use around it, we just haven't had the growth in tax revenue that a street like that, a commercial, mixed-use, commercial street like that should have. So, you know, that's why 8th Street, you know, we're putting a lot of time into it in terms of planning, but I think when we're done, that's going to be a street where, you know, people are going to want to invest in it. And they're going to want to invest, you know, something more than just a single-story building, you know? It's not going to be too high there. It's going to be, you know, probably ultimately four stories is probably the max what we're going to get there. But that's a lot more efficient in terms of tax revenue. So when we invest, you know, when I look at investments in infrastructure, ultimately, what is the return on investment to the city? And if we're not measuring that, you know, I think we're doing it wrong. And we have success in Traverse City doing this. We do it downtown. The DDA TIF actually requires us to plan out what kind of, over the next 30 years, you know, if the TIF starts at year one, it's going to be planned for 30 years. It requires us to have a plan, like, "We're going to do X, and that's going to generate X amount of growth in terms of tax revenue so that we can pay back the TIF." So we have the model already in Traverse City, and now I think we just need to apply that concept, if not the same, similar tools, to other parts of the city. You know, 8th Street I brought up, but Garfield Avenue certainly, 14th Street. And even when we do things like trails, like the Boardman Lake Trail, for me is the return on investment is, there is an economic return, there's also a social return. So we can get into the triple bottom line when we talk about return on investments. And, you know, that's when the math kind of gets complicated, and we have to have agreement on what we're moving forward. But I think that's what we do at the City Commission, we do at the other commission levels, and ultimately, what we do in the community is, "Let's have a discussion, let's move forward, what's the shared vision, and then let's agree on a path forward." So I guess infrastructure for me is all those things combined, but ultimately, we need to be able to measure it.
I think the most important infrastructure priority for the city right now is getting the fiber optic system up and going. I think it's for the economy of the city, to diversify the city, it's very important. If we don't have a, that type of infrastructure, the city's going to fall behind. It can bring year-round all sorts of solid jobs to the city and expand, diversify our economy outside of the tourism business. If the City Commission unfortunately doesn't have actually a say on that directly, but we do have two City Commissioners on the Light and Power Board, and I think it's important for the City Commission, and if I was elected, I would ask to be on Light and Power Board, to really push that, to move that issue forward. Overall, infrastructure, City does a pretty good job. They devote a lot of the resources. Traverse City, if you go to other cities and communities, is in much better shape. We don't special- assess people to repave their street. I think those are all positive things. I am a little concerned about the city's focus these days on just very large projects. I look at 8th Street, it's a nine-and-a-half million-dollar project. It's going to cause an increase in the rate structure for water, likely for sewer also. And I'm not saying that those water lines and those sewer lines shouldn't be done, but when the City Commission has, looks at all their projects, we need to look long-term. What's the next project and what's the impact going to be on the citizens? We need to look, also involve the city more in city residents and issues such as sidewalks. I have a neighbor or a friend who lives on, or resident on the east side of the city, and he tells me a story about how his father-in-law, who's from Italy, comes to visit him, and he goes out for a walk. And he comes back and say, "You don't like walking in the city?" What, he goes, "I have a sidewalk, there's no sidewalk. I have a sidewalk, there's no sidewalk." And I know the neighborhood he's talking about, we have sidewalk gaps. You could connect Munson Avenue to 8th Street by putting a sidewalk in front of two houses, but that is never on the city list. City's talking about a big bonding project to add sidewalks. I think city residents need to be involved in that decision. I think they need to be able to talk to people more directly about where sidewalks go. That's my, you know, push on, you know, it's really, my whole emphasis is getting residents more involved in the city and getting their input, instead of letting all this stuff always fall to city staff.
I think the best way we can support infrastructure is through using things like TIF and Brownfield, and hopefully, private investment, grants, and our general fund. And we have to use that. If I had to think about all the infrastructure, there's a lot of infrastructure in this city. What the things that, right now, I feel like people talk to me the most about, or I see is transportation, multimodal transportation. So there's people who want to ride their bikes and walk, and maybe they're in wheelchairs. We need to make sure people can get to the spaces they want to be by the way they want to get there. But we also have to face the fact that there's lots of cars coming into, in our roads. I think that infrastructure really needs work. Right now, obviously, we're like in a redoing A Street, and that's going to take a lot of different ways to fund it. So I think transportation is one. The second thing is parking. We really need to work on our parking. So there will be a transportation study that comes out at the end of October. I think that's going to be really enlightening and figuring out a way to pay for either a West End parking deck if it says it's needed. Because we have people in our town who can't walk or ride. A senior citizen just talked to me the other day, saying that we need more handicap parking. You know, and I hadn't thought about that. They can't get there without a car. So, you know, how do we balance all those infrastructures, right, parking and that? And then the other one is stormwater. So people don't think about it, but we, City Commission just had a presentation the other day, "We need to invest millions of dollars in stormwater." And that could have the option of being paid for by, if the Michigan Legislature allows us to create a stormwater utility. I know some people might be against it, but I feel like we have to protect our water. And so if we could use that ability to create a utility, I would be in favor of that utility. I think the numbers were, we need to invest three or, two or three million dollars at the start, and a million dollars every year after. That's a significant investment, and I think we need to make that investment in our city. If we don't have clean water, no one's going to come here.
We tend to be in a bubble here in Traverse City, and there's good and bad with that, I suppose. And the bubble isn't necessarily the size of the city. Sometimes it's quite a bit larger than that, but it, yeah, it can be called a bubble. Working with other entities, obviously, very important and ongoing, and there's so many different projects, aspects, different things that fall in that category. What comes to mind for me, I had the opportunity to serve on the Board of Public Works for a year, and that's for our wastewater treatment plant, working with surrounding townships that are part owners in the wastewater treatment plant through the county. And that's a prime example, where monthly, working together, collaborating, everybody's there for the greater community's best interests, but we're all, you know, being careful to make sure that who we're representing is getting a fair shake. And so there can be some heated conversations from time to time, but it's all good people, and we all have the best interests of the area in mind. So that's one concrete example. But other examples of projects that come through would be, say, Hickory Hills, where the city working hand-in-hand with Garfield Township. Likewise, Boardman Lake Trail, city working with the county and Garfield Township. And those aren't so much City Commissioners. There are very few opportunities for City Commissioners to actively collaborate with other government entities. I've had the opportunity, say, through Hickory Hills, by serving on the Hickory Hills Advisory Committee, but I'm a voice of many voices, so I can try to be diplomatic in there and make sure people are listening to one another and hearing one another. But as far as going out and actively seeking representatives of other governments, that tends to be frowned upon to some extent. You know, there, you can have casual interactions and certainly talk anytime you see, but to go out and pursue things isn't necessarily looked positively on. It can work out, but we are, we as the City Commissioners, including the mayor, are the boss of the city manager, and it's really the city manager's role to be negotiating whatever it might be with other government entities. But with that said, there's certainly opportunities, say, for City Commissioners to stay well-informed, to communicate, just to understand things, not necessarily to lay the groundwork for projects, because many projects, you know, they take decades to get going. You know, I referenced Hickory Hills and Boardman Lake Trail. Both of those have taken decades to get going. So one City Commissioner's not going to have really an impact, any sort of behind-the-scenes negotiation, but there are opportunities. And then City Commissioners certainly want to stay engaged with all of our, I forget what your words were, as far as entities, but there's the Chamber of Commerce, there's Groundworks. I don't want to start listing, because I'll leave so many. There's so many, there's Rotary, there's so many entities. Kiwanis within greater Traverse City that are very engaged in what goes on in the city and the region, and it's very important to stay apprised or, you know, there's different levels, because there's so many entities. You can't have a coffee every week with somebody from every organization, but certainly you want to stay abreast of what's important to those various entities, just to be able to do your job as a City Commissioner as well as possible, because they'll have different thoughts, input, opinions. The city and Chief Tuller collaborated extensively with Peninsula Township for their fire services out there. Again, that's not really the City Commission, but we have great staff, and certainly to encourage them to collaborate is positive. And then we have things like schools like Traverse Heights that are, yes, in the city, but serving the community out into Garfield Township. So there's opportunities to work with Garfield as far as safety, unsafe connections to school, sidewalks, things like that as well. So certainly plenty of opportunities, but all these issues tend to be complex, and we're, you know, small gears in a bigger system.
Traverse City doesn't exist in a vacuum. The urban cluster, including East Bay, Grelickville, and Garfield Township, is about 50,000. So it's imperative that we work with them on, you know, all sorts of issues, infrastructure, housing, water. That's a, that's a big one that we worked in in the last two, three years. Myself, I've been on joint committees, one working on housing, it was a joint housing task force, that included the townships and the county. I've also served on the recreational authority, the Joint Recreational Authority, which, you know, oversees the barns and the properties like Hickory Meadows. I've also worked along with that in terms of recreation, just in terms of trying to move towards a recreational, a regional recreational plan, if not a vision, or vision if not a plan, sorry. So, you know, I have experience doing that, and what I would look forward to in terms of serving again is just, it takes time to have those relationships. As elected officials or appointed officials, there's not a lot of opportunity for us to work with the other municipalities around here. Staff does it on a daily basis, but the elected and appointed officials, it's, you know, you have a meeting once or twice every, you know, maybe every season. So it really takes time to develop those relationships, those working relationships. You know, I might know somebody personally, but, you know, it's different when you sit down at a table and start hashing out ideas. So for me, that's something, certainly one of my goals, if I am fortunate enough to get re-elected, is to, what can we do more regionally in terms of planning for the future? You know, I'm not, I don't hide from it. I'm bullish on the city. I think the city really is the economic engine. It's also the social engine of the entire region. You know, people, when they close their eyes and think about home, they think about downtown Traverse City, they think about the bay, whether or not they live, you know, one mile from the bay or 20 miles from the bay. So I think that's really important to keep in mind, and it's a responsibility we have as City Commissioners to keep that regional focus in mind, but also recognize that the decisions we make, you know, if we do it well, to the benefit of the entire region. So that's really my aim going forward. How do we strengthen those relationships and look for more ways to work together and develop those visions and those plans?
I think the perception that we're in a bubble is, I'm going to disagree with that. I think the people in the city, and certainly the city leaders, understand their role. We are interconnected in all sorts of ways. Infrastructure, we share our wastewater treatment plant, okay, with the surrounding townships. We provide water to surrounding townships. When Peninsula's Fire Department, when they basically imploded over their own political issues up in that township, the city stepped up to help them. But there are ways the city can reach out and a little bit more. Health and safety, honestly, I think the first thing, the city doesn't have a lot of control over health issues, but we do serve as host to the regional medical facility. I think we need to better identify where that is for people looking for it. I live on the east side of the city, on Huron Street. I had a guy stop by and ask me if I could give him directions to the hospital. He'd already driven by it twice and couldn't find it. The city needs to identify that. And that's not a one-off. I've had many issues with that. My own father spent time in the hospital there. It's a great facility, but after four days, my mother still couldn't find her way to the hospital in the city. A lot, it's a regional facility, just better signage. I think the city needs, is already engaged, you know, we're a member of TALUS, which is the regional transportation group. We have some input there, but we have to work together with all the other parties. The city's always been engaged, the city's always been willing and supportive, and I don't see how we can do much more in that area. I think one of the issues for the city is when, is that we need to get, when MDOT has big projects planned in the city, those projects, right from the get-go, need to be brought to City Commissioners, so City Commission and the residents know about it and have the ability to get some input on it. We have, you know, reconstruction of Munson Avenue 31 here right now. They're redoing some of the crosswalks, one of the races, but we don't have a crosswalk in this city that's actually functional, from Fair Street all the way to the State Park, so from the entrance of Munson. And this would have been a great opportunity for the city to work collaboratively with MDOT to try to address that, the intersection at 8th Street. MDOT has a plan to start putting in smart, they call them "smart signals." So the purpose of these signals is to make them more responsive to actual traffic flows and patterns. One of the things that can help move more traffic at safer speeds. You have less people running through lights, less people racing to get to the next light. The city should be working with MDOT on this, trying to make sure that we don't get the bottom-of-the-line smart intersections, we get the top of the line. And the city should be looking at that same infrastructure and making those same changes to its, to its own system and encouraging the county. Now, I know that the people, the staff, people Now, I know that the people, the staff people in the city and the county are working with MDOT. But if it's a priority, you won't know if it's a priority for the city residents until it comes back and is discussed by the city. The economy, again, I think fiber optics is one of the biggest thing you can do for the economy right now. Maintaining our environment is important to help maintain tourism. Anything you can do to help reduce traffic, all those things play into a regional economy. And we need to focus more on, you know, expanding our opportunities here in the city. And not just the city, but the surrounding communities. And making sure we have space for any type of business that would like to come in.
I think it's important as a commissioner to build good relationships with other members of the other commissions and to be a collaborator. So far, I think the city has so many already established joint ventures. We have the Joint Rec Authority, we have the new EDC Board, Economic Development Board, which Richard Lewis, Commissioner Lewis is serving on with the city manager. We, the city is partnering with the Preserve Hickory people. So that's private, you know, private city municipal partnership, there's Beta. We have a regional wastewater and water treatment center. So I feel like there's so many ways that the city's already working on. So if I can support those ways, you know, support those already established joint ventures, I think sometimes we support it with our budget. We support it with just being involved in those commitments. I think that's the best way. And then we can also need to be, I think as a city commissioner, you need to be open to new ideas. And so maybe when someone comes to you with a project, we have to really listen to that and really work with our other municipal partners and our city and even departments within the city to do what's best to move these projects forward.
So if reelected, the kind of the concrete projects, which I would like to see through. So it's not me accomplishing them, it's the city accomplishing. Top of the list is probably completing the sidewalk network, or at least getting closer to completing the sidewalk network. I've been pushing for that for approximately six years, both as a planning commissioner and city commissioner. And we're very close. Hoping actually before Election Day, that the city commission will have the opportunity to consider taking action on bonding for a big chunk of our sidewalk network that's still missing. And this gets to all of us being able to get wherever it is in those community interactions with our neighbors, with local businesses, kids going to school, anybody going to parks, whatever it might be. So there's that, top of my list. And then other projects would include Hickory Hills, Boardman Lake Trail. Again, projects that have been very long in the making, decades in the making. And I take no credit for, but I would like to see those completed and completed well. I was raised that if something's worth doing, it's worth doing well. And I still believe that. It can be very challenging at times because often it's easy at the city level to say, "Well, this is better than it used to be." And yes, sometimes we do need to go with that. But whenever possible, it's nice to complete a project that we as a city can be proud of. Aside from those more concrete projects that I would like to see through, what I'd like to be able to accomplish if elected to serve another four years is to bring an increased understanding, both to the city commission and to the public, as far as what I would consider carrying costs for our infrastructure. So whether it's operation and maintenance. We have a complex system, everything's complex, I suppose. But we've got a lot of infrastructure that maybe some of the original funding was provided by the state or federal governments. But that funding's not there to replace it. So we have the SAW grant, which we were fortunate to work through when I was on the advisory committee for that, storm water and wastewater. A very significant grant to try to understand what our infrastructure is for storm water and wastewater. And kind of the key takeaway for me from that is that the results, if you will. Estimated that we could spend $2 million a year in Traverse City on our storm water infrastructure forever. Not just, oh, for 10 years, $2 million a year, but $2 million a year forever, just to maintain the status quo of our storm water infrastructure. Because the feds and the state are no longer around to help us with what they helped us invest in over the past century. That's a daunting number because right now we spend maybe $400,000 a year, but we don't have a dedicated source of funds for that. So I guess something that I would hope to, but it very likely will take more than four years, is to get a storm water utility. And many city commissioners and past mayors have discussed storm water utility. But that's a challenge, that's a huge challenge. I'm confident it will happen, but it takes tremendous effort to get it right by the state so it doesn't get tied up in the courts. But I think the community values our watershed and our bays to the extent that we could accomplish that. But it will take quite some effort. And part of it, going back to the $2 million a year, it's not to say, hey, let's just spend $2 million a year, let's tax ourselves or, you know, have fees associated with what each of us puts into our storm water system. But there are great opportunities, this gets to the complexity of, well, how about if we had less storm water? Maybe we should put a target of 1.2 million a year. What can we accomplish for 1.2 million a year? And how do we reduce our storm water burden by the 40% to get us down to 1.2? You know, what if our residential streets were a little bit narrower? Or bump outs in mid-block sort of thing and a little bit narrower? So because our streets and our parking, surface parking lots are huge contributors to our storm water burden. And again, there's tremendous opportunities. And I would like, again, the city commission and the public to have a better appreciation, not just of storm water, but how our hard surface, our storm water, our trees, you know, all the salt we need to put on our roads in the wintertime, the plowing, everything comes together as far as operation and maintenance costs.
I'm driven to run for office out of a love for community, a love for Traverse City. I'm attracted to this place, just like everyone else in terms of clear water, accessible parks, a vibrant downtown, quiet neighborhoods. All that kind of plays into just a, you want to engage with this community. For me, having a background in planning and geography, urban planning, just kind of, it's in my blood, it keeps me up at night. So running for city commission, serving on planning commission is just something I need to do inside. I've always been surprised with Traverse City in terms of, we outperform our location as well as our small size. You know, things like the Dennis Museum, the State Theater, these are world-class places that get huge amounts of investment. The Dennis Museum currently is, you know, going through a reconstruction and an expansion, I should say. And that's always just kind of stuck with me. You know, when I've been traveling, it's like, wow, Traverse City has all this on a really accessible scale. And I just think that's something that we need to cherish, something we need to honor. And it's also something we have to protect. And to protect it, we need to continue to improve upon it. You can't just make something great and expect it to be great forever. You have to keep reinvesting and re-envisioning places. So for me, it's exciting to be a part of that. I've learned a lot in the last four years serving on the city commission. And I think those, the knowledge, the experience that I've had, would only make my next four years that much better. Areas, you know, I know the areas where I need to improve upon in terms of a city commissioner, in terms of, you know, I do reach out, I do really connect with people, but I can do better in terms of listening and really getting in and hearing what people are saying and what their concerns are. That said, ultimately, we also need leadership in place that is willing to make tough decisions, even when the room might be all against it. You've got to remember that, you know, the people in the room, there's also everyone in the community. There's also future generations that we're making decisions for. So if you can live with your decision in your gut on that level, I think you can be a strong leader. And I think I have done that. You know, there's maybe only one or two votes that I kind of regret. But even then, it always comes back around in terms of a correction or we get to readdress an issue. And so there's always ways to improve. And no decision that we're making on the city commission is, you know, that pivotal. It always comes back. We're very incremental in Traverse City. So I appreciate that. And just, I'm proud to be a part of the last four years and look for another four years to see what we can do.
What I really hope to accomplish in my term as a city commissioner is try and bring the city a little bit back together. There's currently sort of a division in the city over development issues. And I think we can all find common ground. I think you have to do that by, you have to understand people and listen to their positions. I'm very good at emphasizing with people's concerns and issues, even if you don't agree with them. You have to kind of understand where they're coming from, to relate to them. And that's how you reach areas of compromise. I want to listen to the city residents. I think their voice sometimes gets drowned out. And the city tries, but it's, I think my background in communications could help improve the city's ability to really get a handle on what people want. And I don't have any big projects I want to accomplish. Those things are going to come to us one way or the other, naturally. And I want, but I want to be able to make sure they're smart projects. One of the things, a friend of mine advised me, you know, in business, three things. Don't leave any, don't make half, don't build half bridges. Often it seems that's what the city does. We start a project, we don't finish it, and we move on to something else, for whatever reason. If we're going to do a project, we need to do it all the way through. If, and the other thing is, is maintain civilian control. And too often, I see city commissioners sort of defaulting to city staff. City staff, I like city staff, I know them all, most of them personally. They're bright people, they're good people, and they're well-intentioned. But they are, they do have a tendency, and as any bureaucrat does, they like the big projects. I mean, honestly, you want to be part of something big, filling potholes is not the most important aspect to them. Well, actually, the city does it better than anybody else I know. But it's, you know, those types of things. And we need to enable that. And we need to make sure that our focus stays on things that mean something to residents. You know, paving a street that's totally torn up is not going to get huge kudos from national organizations or the state or win you any awards. But the people on that street are going to be quite happy. And that's where our focus has to be. Now, there are big projects that are going to have to get done. But sometimes we go on plans or things that were done or advice that comes from other parts of the country, and it doesn't really fit here. So we need to stay focused and make sure what we're doing in the city is what the people in the city want.
So I think the big picture is, I don't know, maybe I got this from Girl Scouts, but like, just leave it better than when I found it. So to make Traverse City a better place, you know, I'm pretty vague. I would love to see our corridors improved. I would love it if we're doing A Street, you know, if we could put fiber down and that became like a tech corridor, you know, corridor, that would be so cool. So I think improving our corridors for the businesses and people that live there. I think another thing I would really be happy is if we left and people didn't say we needed housing, you know? That'd be a great problem. Or they said, hey, we got lots of options. Or, you know, hey, because of the beta bus going out to Garfield Township, I can get a bus and I can live there and work downtown. So I'd love to see, I would love to see our housing situation better. And then just overall, I would like to see a building of trust between us and our partners, our municipal partners. I think sometimes with elections, people get just, you know, kind of like disenfranchised and they don't trust the government. And so I feel like, I try to do a really good job of listening to people, doing research, reaching out to people. And so I feel like if people could, at the end of an election, feel like, yeah, the right people got it and I trust them and we're going to get to a better place, I'd be pretty happy.